Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge Town Council Debate Forum. My name is Jack Jovan. I am the Vice Chairman of the Southbridge Democratic Town Committee. I’m joined tonight with Monique Manor, the Town Counselor and Treasurer of the Southbridge Republican Town Committee. This is our fourth annual debate forum. It’s, as many of you are aware, we do not have partisan elections in the town of Southbridge. It truly is a nonpartisan election. However, we felt that it was important enough as town committees that we could come together on one night to bring to the town a forum because we all do care about our town and what goes on in it. And Southbridge is not short of any issues. And earlier tonight, we had five candidates for the Southbridge School Committee that came and gave their thoughts about the direction of this, of what they could bring to the school district, the school committee in the town of Southbridge to improve the school side or work to address issues on the school side. And now it’s your opportunity to introduce yourself to the residents of Southbridge, answer some well-thought-out questions that we have for you about different topics in town government, and just get your face out there. I’m going to introduce Monique Manor, who will introduce our town moderator, and we look forward to hearing from you this evening.
Thank you, Jack. Hi, Monique Manor. I’m a Town Counselor and I’m also the Treasurer of the Southbridge Republican Town Committee. I want to say welcome to all the candidates. There’s some familiar faces and some new faces up here. I want to wish you all luck. And I’m now going to turn it over to our debate moderator, Mr. William Loftus. Just a little bit about attorney, I’m sorry, William Loftus. He’s an attorney in the town of Millbury. He’s also a professor at QCC. He’s an adjunct. He teaches economics, history, and political science, and he’s also a former candidate of the Connecticut General Assembly. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to tonight’s debate. The candidates, I’m sure, have been advised of the format here, so we are not going to delay the beginning on this at all, but just remind you that there’s timing involved with your statements, your opening statement, your closing statement, as well as your answers to questions. That’ll be governed by the lights that you see before you. Green for go and continue, orange to, or yellow to get ready to stop, and red to stop. Okay? So with that, we’ll begin the debate. The order has been selected to have three minutes for an opening statement, and we’ll begin opening statements with Mr. Zotos.
Hello. My name is Paul Zotos, and I’m running for Town Council. I think most people in town know me, but for those who don’t, I’m a native son. I was born here in Southbridge. I ran the cable office here for 10 years. I served on the Cable Committee for three years. We decided to build this studio, and we got it done. And it still works pretty good. It’s a real pleasure to be up here. I watched the Town Council meeting. I filmed every meeting, every Town Council, every school committee meeting for over 10 years, and I’ve seen the good and the bad and the ugly. And I always knew when I retired that I would want to take a shot and take my chances and give it a try myself. I’ve got, I’ve seen a lot of good ideas go by the wayside. I’ve seen a lot of smart managers come to town and only be smart for themselves. I haven’t seen anybody come to this town since I’ve been home that really wanted to work for the town and for the people. I’ve seen them give themselves raises. I see them give themselves new positions, and I don’t see a lot of voting for people. And that’s what I want to bring to the table is, let’s start doing things for the citizens of Southbridge rather than self-serving, buy another, get another office, buy another car. I think our manager’s making as much as the governor of Massachusetts, and I think we’ve let that salary get way out of hand. And those are the kinds of things I’d like to take another look at and say, you know, “Southbridge is running on a budget, and I think the Town Hall should be running on a budget.” And I just, you know, I balanced the budget in the cable office for 10 years in a row, and I was able to spread that money out so that we had all our meetings filmed and all our concerts on the Common were under control. I managed those concerts on the Common. I booked all those bands. We didn’t need parking signs. We had 1,500 people down at the Common one time when Liz Latenda was on American Idol, and we didn’t have a police officer, and we didn’t have a parking problem. I had the Army Band down there. I had the Navy Band down there. Parking was never an issue. We need some food down there, and we need all the town to go and see these nice concerts that we’ve put on. And if you sponsor a concert, don’t just go to the one you’re sponsored. Let’s go to all the concerts. Let’s all meet down there and play with our children and listen to our music and maybe even talk about things we should be talking about and not just wait once a year to talk about them. You know, we can talk all the time, and we’ve got a great TV station up here, and if somebody has an issue, we can just set up two chairs and we can talk about that issue. We don’t have to be timed at a podium. We can just sit and talk just 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We’ve got three channels, and that’s what we should be doing, and that’s what I’m going to bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zotos, and we’ll move to Ms. O’Claire.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. I just want to say that to begin with. Southbridge has been my home for almost 30 years now. I graduated from the old high school in the top 10% of my class, and someday I really hope to send my daughter to the new high school and hope that she can say the same about graduating in the top 10% of her class. I originally wrote quite a bit about my background in profit and loss and professional designation, dealing with corporate insurance and finances. I originally outlined every effort I’ve made in the community, but I thought better of making this all about me. This is about you, the voters, the people of Southbridge. This is to help better inform you what I or what we as candidates stand for. And I’ll tell you what I stand for in the most simple way that I think I can. I want my friends, I want my family who relocated to Southbridge in the early 2000s and prior to have homes that are worth what they paid for them or even more. I want to bring business back to Main Street and have an Economic Development Office that focuses on the absolutely brilliant ideas that the Economic Development Commission recommends. We need to reinvent Southbridge as the place that welcomes new business. We are in a position to do this right now, and it starts with Main Street. As shops fill, as people begin to visit from outside, they are exposed to the brighter side of Southbridge. Vacant homes begin to fill. Neighborhoods are lifted out of the landlord mentality, and you will see crime begin to drop. We can actually start focusing on tenants from the master plan. There are short, medium, and long-term goals to turn the town around and create a welcoming atmosphere to potential residents and potential industry. Every year, the focus is to stop the bleeding. The question posed, what can we live without? It’s time to look towards ending that question and at some point instill some very real steps we can take to get long-term solutions. Quick note, solutions that don’t technically or don’t necessarily involve selling the entire town to the Southbridge landfill. We can at least keep Main Street. We want to, in all seriousness, this is a time of turnover in the Town Hall that I’ve never seen in my lifetime. Many key positions are retiring, and we have the opportunity for fresh faces and fresh ideas. I hope to be one of those faces. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. O’Claire. And now we’ll move to Mr. James.
Hi. My name is Mike James. First, I’d like to thank the Republican and Democrat Committees. I know it’s a lot of work. I’ve done this by myself, Bob Cherninsky, Monique Manor, Jack Jovan, Kevin Cristo. Thank you for your putting this on and giving us the opportunity to do this. I’d like to thank the Cable Access Committee. I’d like to thank the moderator, William Loftus, for coming here. I’d like to thank the audience for coming in and the audience that’s on TV watching this. I was born in California. I worked for Kmart for 15 years. I started out as a temporary worker, and I quickly moved into management. I moved out to Massachusetts because we opened up a new distribution center in Bill Rickam, Massachusetts. When I worked for Kmart, I helped develop a warehouse management system. So before I actually moved here, I was all over the country, spending a lot of time in a lot of different places. In 97, I moved to Massachusetts, and when I saw an opportunity to open a business up in Worcester, I took that. And I ran a business, a retail, for five years as a brick-and-mortar. At one point, I realized that the way that the industry was changing, it just didn’t make sense for me to stay open and get into debt. So I went to online sales after that. My computer experience working with, I’ve always had computer experience. My father was a Director of Data Processing, and I had a Radio Shack TRS-80 from the age of about 16. That was back when nobody else had it. I grew up in a fairly wealthy school, and nobody else in my school had a computer, and I did have one, so that really gave me a big advantage. When I had my business, I did web design for my business, and I did the online sales, and I ended up helping other people with their webs, their websites. And from there, I’ve grown, and I now own a web design business. I’ve been working in Southbridge in different aspects. I am the Chairman of the Republican Town Committee. I worked with EHS, the EHS Subcommittee. I was on that for a year. I was on, I’m sorry, General Government Subcommittee. I’ve been on that for three years. I’ve been on the Bicentennial Committee for two years. My growing up in California, though, I still have pride in Southbridge. I chose to live in Southbridge. I think that what I would bring to this Town Council is a proven record of being able to work with people, even with people I disagree with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James, we’ll move to Mr. Moriarty.
Thank you. I’d also like to thank everybody from the Democratic and Republican Town Committees and everybody else that’s put this together, those who are watching it at home, those who took the time out of their busy lives to come out here and take part in this. I wanted to also just thank the nearly 1,400 folks that, three years ago, put me here on this Town Council. And I think that, over these last three years, the votes I’ve taken, the decisions I’ve made, have always been with those folks in mind. And I’m sure there were some that are thrilled with their results. I’m sure there were some that thought they were getting something else, and that’s how that works. I think this year, this election, both on the town side and on the school side, is a pivotal year for an election. This town is, in a number of different ways, at a crossroads with two different, very different ways that we could end up going, and we need to make that right. We cannot afford to go down that wrong path, especially with the bicentennial looming. It’d be great to be able to actually have something positive to build off of in the community. And just that, with every vote I’ve taken, whether it’s a unanimous vote or if I’ve been on the tail end of an eight-to-one vote, seven-to-two, six-to-three, whatever it may be, I’ve always believed that the time is always right to do what is right, and I try to do that with every single vote that I’ve ever cast and plan to do so if the folks decide to reelect me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moriarty. We’ll move to Mr. Sottil.
Yes, I want to thank the Combined Committee for inviting me here tonight. I was born and raised in New York City and attended public and parochial schools, Cornell University’s School of Industrial Labor Relations, and the United States Department of Transportation Safety Institute. I’m a Marine Corps veteran, a life member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars and the Marine Corps League. I presently reside in Southbridge with my wife. My railroad background was combined with 55 years in industry and regulatory experience in railroad signal circuit design, signal system project planning and installation. I am a certified railroad accident reconstructionist and an expert in all wayside signal and rail-highway grade crossing communications-based and positive train control and onboard locomotive automatic cab signal and train control applications in both electric traction and non-electric propulsion systems. My federal service included accident investigation training and participated with the National Transportation Safety Board investigating causal factors of major rail accidents in New England, New York, and New Jersey. I have represented several Massachusetts municipalities concerning Rail-Highway Four Quadrant Gate-sponsored hearings. I am presently a signal and grade-crossing system consultant for the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities. I’ve also provided technical guidance for metropolitan New York City area commuter railroads when my field research exposed dangerous anomalies when signal and propulsion traction negative returned past connecting power substations found that eliminated train detection circuits. My community service to Southbridge has included serving as the first chairman of the Southbridge Massachusetts Liquor Licensing Board, in which I provided the regulated community with its first iteration of local liquor license requirements. My community service also included leadership in several successful Toys for Tots campaigns for the South Central Massachusetts Marine Corps League, and I am presently serving as the Vice President of the Southbridge Massachusetts Veterans Council. And I am a member of the South, presently a member of the Southbridge Massachusetts Charter Review Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sottili, if I had that correct. Ms. Clemens.
Good evening, and thank you, Town Election Debate Committee, for the opportunity to share a bit about myself and to be able to learn more about the other candidates. Many of you watching are already familiar with who I am, at present a Town Counselor finishing up my second term. I was born here in Southbridge and have spent the majority of my life in our very unique and diverse community, along with my husband, Bob, and our five wonderful grown children, all born at our local Harrington Hospital, four of whom still reside in Southbridge. I’m a graduate of Quinn-Sigman College and UMass Eisenberg School of Management. I’ve spent a good deal of my life raising my children, staying connected in the sales industry, assisting in the family businesses, and working as a volunteer for many local nonprofits, mainly on fundraising. Six years ago, I was encouraged to run for office, my initiation into municipal government and politics. I’ve enjoyed the work, the many meetings, the long hours researching issues, addressing citizens’ concerns, attending learning seminars, meeting other municipal officers, officials also working for the good of the communities, even the council debates, calm and heated alike, the politics not so much. I came into office with one objective, to work for the common betterment of this town. I knew that there’d be differences of opinion in what that meant to each of us. I’ve taken that objective into consideration with every vote that I’ve made. I took office ready and willing to do what I could whenever needed. When I came on board, we, the community, were hit with an immediate and serious issue. The RMV was moving out of town after 30 years and heading to the facility on the Mass Pike. So myself, along with a small posse, spearheaded a campaign that did indeed make the governor stand up and take notice. We were not going to take his decision lying down. The results can be seen today as the RMV occupies the Depot Building, paying rent to our town. Talk about on-the-job training. Another area of concern arose as I attended the senior monthly luncheons at the community center. Seeing uninsulated asbestos-cocked windows and knowing that the town money was literally blowing out the windows, it prompted me to seek community involvement and to get those windows replaced. Through the generosity of businesses and sweat equity of myself and others, the job got done at no cost to the taxpayers. Speaking of taxpayers, the true backbone of any community, I’m a firm believer in keeping up with your obligations by the laws and the rules that govern our town. After asking, I learned of our outstanding water and sewer receivables a few years back. It was apparent that a large number of people were taking advantage of our lax collection system. In some cases, bills were over three years old and still accruing. How unfair to those who paid on time and met their obligations. I urged the town manager to embark on a collections plan that realized actual dollars, not owed debt on the books. We took in just under $500,000 in six months. I’ve collaborated with department heads on town cleanups, economic development events, and in support of youth programs, most notably the Cops and Kids Program sponsored by the Police Department. They’ve won recent awards by the USDA. I’ve never been one to sit back and let others do all the work. I’ve been a 24/7 counselor available in any part of the country or world. I’m lucky to have the support of my family, who understands that taking these calls are very important to me. I’m not sure I will have all the answers you may be looking for tonight. I doubt that anyone up here will satisfy all of you. The beauty of the job is there’s always an opportunity to learn, and I look forward to doing more for you in the future. Thank you.
Very well. Now we’ll move to our question-and-answer segment of the debate. Each candidate will be given a two-minute opportunity to answer the same question. We’ll start with Mr. Zotos. The question is, what is your fiscal approach? Speak to us about your ideas regarding the town budget.
The town budget. Well, I’ve attended quite a few meetings, and like I said in my opening statement, that, you know, very, very little money is spent on helping people. We, you know, and when I vote, I’m going to try to vote for things that does the most good for the most people. I’m not interested in raising people’s salaries who don’t do anything. There’s like four secretaries in all the offices in the Town Hall now, and I think the school committee was talking about how fat the administration is getting with the school. And, you know, if you look around right now, the, it’s spring. Well, two, actually, two months have gone by, and they haven’t painted the lines on the street, they haven’t fixed the traffic lights, they haven’t fixed any potholes, but they did hang the flowers, you know? So I don’t know what that cost us. And then we’ve got to water the flowers, but I would have think that the first thing to do as soon as the snow was gone was to do the lines on the road and the lights and the potholes and make sure that downtown and all our streets are safe, because they’re really not right now, and you’re never going to get a business to move downtown if you take your life in your hands just to cross the street. You press the button and nothing happens. People are running from corner to corner. Everybody in Southbridge goes 10 feet past the light, and they cross there. And it happens every single day. It happens right in front of our law enforcement. It happens right in front of our town councils. It happens every day. I can take the camera any day of the week, go downtown, and I’ll see that there’s a lot of lawlessness down there, and it’s not safe. And you’re never going to get a business to move, and that’s why they all left, because it wasn’t safe for the customers to even cross the street or park, or there’s nowhere to eat and there’s nothing to do. So Main Street died, and I will try to turn all that around. I don’t think I can do it all, but I will try to get most of it done.
Thank you, Mr. Zotos. Let me correct myself. In this approach that we’re taking tonight, the first candidate to answer will receive two minutes, and each other candidate will receive one minute in response to that. So let me repeat the question. What is your fiscal approach? Speak to us about your ideas regarding the town budget. Mr. Zotos just answered. Ms. O’Claire, you’ll have one minute.
Thank you. So fiscal approach to the town budget, it’s kind of an interesting question. I think that the Town Council this year did a really good job in reeling everything back and trying to save some of the revenue from Casella to try and eliminate that type of spending in the future. I think they did a really good job in not raising taxes for the community. I think that something that needs to be done when you’re thinking about the town budget is, don’t look at it as a one-year thing, because guess what’s going to happen in 12 months? You’re going to have another budget come up. At that point, what are you going to do? And I think that, as far as a fiscal approach to a town budget, if you’re looking more towards the future and not towards exactly what’s happening in the moment, we’ll be able to increase revenue from outside sources such as businesses coming in or economic development and maybe even grants from the state to increase infrastructure and things of that nature.
Thank you. Mr. James, your one minute.
I am very much about fiscal responsibility. I am glad to see that the Town Council did not want to raise taxes and tried to tighten budgets up, tighten the belts. That’s what we need to do. We have a landfill that is going to fill in two years. I do not want to see any additions up there. I do not want to see an expansion. I would like to see it fill up in two years and close it, but I know we’re going to have a $2.5 million to $4 million, depending on who you talk to, deficit coming, or shortfall coming from not having that landfill up there. And so we need to start working on being able to deal with that. That’s $2.5 million to $4 million is a pretty good chunk of money there. I do have one issue with the budget, though, that we have, and that’s we’re borrowing money to pay this with the capital expenses, and I’m not in favor of doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let’s move to Mr. Moriarty.
Thank you. I think what we need to do is to always find a way to try and find a balance between the short-term and the long-term needs, similar to what’s already been noted, and something I noted when I was one of those who voted not to delve into the levy limit this year, was really just that fiscal cliff that’s looming in terms of Casella filling up and that money coming to an end. And for years, we’ve known that they will eventually come, but the council historically has done little to nothing to actually prepare for that. So that was a big motivating factor for me this year. I’ve always been fine spending the money so long as we feel that it’s being spent appropriately. I don’t mind paying for good services. I don’t mind paying for full-time police, fire, DPW, et cetera, et cetera, so long as they’re doing the job and that we’re doing that accountably.
Thank you. Mr. Sottili.
Yes. My approach to fiscal integrity would be to take a breath every time we study for a budget on the council, not to rush in like lemmings and spend money in a fashion that’s going to break down in the future, because we have no assets left to apply to our budgets. I believe that I will, if elected, make sure that every town department has a clear budget with explanations and can detail where the money will be, as required by our charter, by the way, already. And I believe taking that type of a approach will ensure that the folks in this town will get the benefits from their experience paying taxes in this town.
Thank you. Ms. Clemens.
Thank you. Having sat through six budgets, it’s not always easy. It’s definitely not easy. You have the people who want more and the people who say we spend too much, and then we continue to go back and forth, and we get the departments to come in and to explain all their needs to us, and it’s just never enough for everybody and for all that they want. One of the things that is a real highlight in what’s happened in the last six years is I have watched and questioned the fact that School Choice, for instance, has gone up in our budget from $700,000 to $1.2 million. So I really, you know, we really need to pull that in and to get that extra income to be able to support other things in this community. Our budget of $54 million or thereabouts, you know, more than half is going to the school budget. We need to find a way to work together and reel that in. Some of the ideas would be to cut, you know, we need to continue to sell off some of the liabilities we have in terms of town buildings. That will reduce our insurance costs, that will reduce our liability costs. One of those areas is the large school building that we said we would get rid of, and we did not. So I have urged that all along, that we start to rent a place for the school committee, if that’s the case, which would be a much less budget number. So there’s a lot of ways to do it. In a minute, it’s really tough to figure it all out, but for six years, we have continually tried to rein the budget in, and we did good work this year. I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We’ll move to the second question, and we will begin with Ms. O’Claire. The question is, water and sewer rates have escalated significantly over the past several years. What would you do to prevent further increases?
So I know that talk has been made in years past with the candidates about taking a look at alternate water sources rather than doing our own. To my knowledge, I’m not sure if that’s ever been done. I think that it’s a great idea to do something of that nature, to see if there is a less expensive plan. Something that I do know, I personally have reservations, and this past week it came up. Casella is trying to, we’re going to be financing, or we may be financing, a pre-treatment lead shit plant up near the landfill for Casella to do their own lead shit, which will then tax our system with about 6 million tons of water per year. Right now, the, this past Monday, the Town Council actually voted to appropriate bonding to fix problems that are already occurring in the water treatment facility plant. Something that, if I’m elected, I really, really would like to not happen is to see that pre-treatment plant actually go through, so that that amount of water will be then taxing over the long run for the entire duration of this pre-treatment plant. I don’t think that that’s in our best nature, and I think that that would be stepping backwards and trying to reduce the water and sewer taxes. As for current things that we’re doing now, I think that the bonding, I’m not sure if we saw that in years past. This past General Government Subcommittee meeting, they had been talking about how last year there was bonding that was supposed to be taken out to do maintenance and some repairs, but it never was. So maybe if we take it a little bit at a time, instead of throwing at the taxpayers these giant repairs and these giant bills that end up eating up all of their monthly budgets, I think that that’s something that we could definitely take a look at as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James.
Yes, the question is framed in a manner that assumes that the desire is to lower the costs here. I think that the costs are reasonable. I know a lot of people may not want to hear that, but the fact is, we have good water in Southbridge, and that is something that we have to be proud of. in Southbridge, and that is something that we have to be proud of. I was talking to a gentleman that was here working on doing a process inside the water tanks. This was last year, and he said that, to start out with, we had this giant ice block inside that, that tank, one that he had never seen this big before, but what amazed him was how crystal clear that water was. He said he does this all over the country, and he would not drink city water from most places, but he says, "In Southbridge, I'd drink your water. You have good water here." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moriarty.
Thank you. Prior to becoming chair in July of this, this past year, the town had numerous negotiations and discussions with our neighbors in Charlton about an IMA, an intermunicipal agreement, to send water there, and those talks had broken down several times and were non-existent. And in July, shortly after being appointed, several people from Charlton had reached out and through our manager and myself through multiple meetings. We eventually hammered out a, a deal that will help stabilize the water rates here in town. I think that's something that's very important. And also, I think one of the other problems is, similar to what Mr. James has pointed out, that we need to look at the long-term view of this as well, because for far too long, past councils have kicked the can down the road on those repairs, and now, in the long run, we're paying much, much more and creating those large increases. So as long as we do what we need to do to maintain, that will help keep those increases from becoming unbearable.
Thank you. Mr. Sotilly.
Yes. The water and sewer governance process in Southbridge has by unintended consequence been corrupted by a naive and uninformed individuals, including incumbent councillor candidates, who may or may not have become unwitting agents of the landfill operator. Their lemming-like rush to implement the landfill operator's cloak-and-dagger request to capture additional airport land last night for landfill use in a general government subcommittee produced what respectfully can be described as a disaster looking for a home. The cross-reference efforts by interested citizens incited confusion and factual arguing window that caused an inclusion of a non-dismissive, no-action subcommittee recommendation to the main council body to build a $2.5 million lichate, pre-treatment facility. After a presentation of scare tactic scenarios that were camouflaged as a Hobson's choice...
Mr. Sotilly, can we conclude, we're gonna conclude with that as your time has been exceeded. We'll move on to Ms. Clemens.
Thank you. As, as a previous speaker has said, one of the things that has been in the works for quite some time is a new IMA with Charlton. We had an original IMA back with Mr. Clark six years ago, which really helped our local community hospital to get their water going at their new center up in Charlton, and I'm proud that I was part of some of that negotiation there, which, which helped them to realize what they needed. And now this new IMA will, as anticipated, stabilize the rates so that we can deal with our infrastructure improvement needs that are great. And I wouldn't say that we have pushed anything on. We have been continually working on fixing those infrastructure needs. However, the needs are great and at a very high cost. These are not things that are hundreds of thousands of dollars. These are things that are millions of dollars, which doesn't make the ratepayers happy. I would also ask you, there have been some comments that have been made this evening that are not completely accurate, and, and do yourself and, and all the favor of going and getting the accurate information. There have been some numbers stated and some things said. I just encourage you to get the correct information before you draw any conclusions, and I look forward to better rates in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Zodos.
I'd like to hear the question again.
Certainly. Water and sewer rates have escalated significantly over the past several years. What would you do to prevent further increases?
First thing I'd do is get Casella out of our water business. We've got great water, we've got great reservoirs up there, but I'm not so sure that our, our system to deliver the water from the reservoirs to our houses is so great as our water is. That's a big problem. If, if the water is so great, then how come we see everybody buying water? The town hall is buying water. They're not drinking out of the tap, they're buying water right over there. You go to CVS and little old ladies are trying to drag home from CVS gallons of water. So, you know, we put the chloramine in for Charlton, not for the citizens of Southbridge. We should be selling our water in glass bottles, and that would be nice.
Very good. All right. So I would just remind the candidates in answering that the first candidate to answer will receive two minutes. It will be governed by the lights, green, yellow, and red. When the light turns red, I'll have to ask you to stop or I'll move on to the next responder. So we're on to the third question, and we'll begin with Mr. James. We'll have two minutes to answer this. What are your ideas or priorities regarding economic development?
Well, one thing we need to do is get rid of the blight in this town. 143 properties that we have on a list of properties that need to be demolished, we need to get on top of that. If we don't, if we don't start removing these properties, they're just gonna keep stacking up and up. And the properties that have the dilapidated proper, buildings on it are not collecting taxes for us. We have people who have just given up on the property, and now we're not getting anything out of it. Once we turn that building around, we can start building something on it, get it back into circulation, start collecting some revenue from that property, and we start raising our property values in town. There's a lot of opportunities that we have here. You look at, at the Main Street and how many empty shops there are, getting some business back in here, this, this is one of the ways to do that. Also, we have some real opportunities with Charlton. We are the whole package here in Southbridge as a city. We have, we have landfill, we do have a landfill. We have an airport, we have a hospital. We, we have, we have a lot of things. Water, we have a water and sewage. We have Charlton next to us, and if you look at Route 20 as it comes through Auburn, there's all kinds of business there. You come into Charlton, there's sparsely any business at all. You hit Sturbridge, there's business again. Charlton doesn't have water. Charlton doesn't have sewage. If we can partner up with them, we can get businesses on Route 20. Now granted, Charlton will probably grow more from that, but we grow with them. There's more money being made in Charlton to spend in Southbridge. There are people who live in Southbridge that would be, get, able to get jobs in Charlton. If we can partner up with a, a, a city right next to us, a town right next to us, we could all grow economically.
Thank you. Mr. Moriarty.
Thank you. First and foremost, we have a economic development director who is currently retiring, and we need to find an experienced and energetic replacement who is going to be aggressive and go out and pursue businesses, pursue commercial leads, try to recruit people to town. That is something that we are, that we really need to, to work on. I think we need to do a better job spending community development block grant funds more effectively, efficiently, and appropriately, rather than spending it on so much money that we spend on awnings and signage and, and flowers and, and decorations for downtown. Those, to me, are the two biggest things. We need to be aggressive, and we need to actually pursue. We can't just wait for the next business, small or large, just come knocking on our door. We need to create those opportunities.
Thank you. Mr. Sotilly.
Yes. I believe that a future town council is, must close ranks and actively combine their efforts, the council itself, not the town manager or any department head, to go out to hire someone who is an economic professional, economic developer, and let them leave the community and travel and bring a company back to Southbridge. We would pay them a, a, a living wage to do so. However, when they return with a company that will hire 1,000 employees and remain here for at least a year, they would receive a bonus. If the town council can control that activity in a more aggressive way, I believe we will be successful.
Okay. Ms. Clemens.
Thank you. We need to continue to support our biggest assets, and that's twofold. That's businesses and being business-friendly, but that's also the homeowners and such that may be coming into our community. We need to keep them in, in this community. So as, as far as the business side of things go, here in the town hall, we need to make sure that we've streamlined and be efficient in our processes. We need to make sure when people come in that we are business-friendly. We give them an attitude that we actually care, that they're even interested in our community, and that doesn't always happen. And that takes a good manager to manage his people, his department heads, which is out of our purview as a council. On top of that, we need to stay abreast as councilors ourselves. We need to be out there, active in the community, attending functions, going to the Chamber of Commerce meetings and meeting the business owners, knocking on doors at those businesses and saying, "Hey, can we do anything to help you?" One of the things that we did here for quite some time was to invite new businesses and old businesses to come and give a few seconds and let us know what their business was all about. QCC is about to open an innovation technology acceleration center to the tune of $2 million funded by Governor Patrick and others. It will be opening in, in January 2016. I hope that they will do a presentation very soon for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zodos.
It's not much time.
Well, all right.
I believe the first thing we should do is form a search committee and replace our economic development person with someone that has qualifications, that has a real resume, that has brought a business back to a town that had, you know, a lot of companies that gone by the wayside. We, we, we've gotta form a search committee and take the same time we take to find a manager, because they cost just about the same and maybe a little more. And there's only a handful of guys in Massachusetts that really know how to do this. I met one, his name was Kevin Flynn. He once worked in this town hall, and we threw him out after a year. You know, it's too bad, but I think Kevin Flynn is still, still available if you could, you know, if you can get him. But so find someone with a real resume, who's taken a town like Southbridge and turned it around. Don't just hand the job off to some secretary who is in the office. We've gotta hire, even if we have to borrow the money, we have to hire a real economic development person, and they will lead us. They will teach us how to do it, you know, but you can't do it, you can't do it out of your coat pocket.
Ms. O'Clair.
Not to beat a dead horse, but I also feel that the economic development position might be one of the most important ones in town hall at this time. I think that the retiring of the current position and the hiring of the, what will be the new position is a very, very important process, and that person should move their focus on to the tenants that the Economic Development Commission themselves actually believe in. It's a group of business owners and people who have been involved in so many, like, great ventures that you or I have never even heard of, and they have these great ideas that are largely falling on deaf ears, and those voices need to be heard. Those voices are the voices of our community that will lift us from where we are at now into the next level. And I really think that that's where the focus needs to be, in listening to those voices. Thank you.
Very well. Mr. James. You did, you led off the last one. I'm just testing you all. You're paying attention? Very good. How about the folks over there at the table? Am I okay? All right. We'll go to the next question, Mr. Moriarty, starting off. This question was posed in the previous debate to the school committee, and now it's your turn to answer, I think. Characterize the working relationship between the town council and the school committee. How would your presence on the town council make a difference?
Sure. It's good timing, I suppose, for that one to be mine. You know, when, this, this past July, when I was made chair and Lauren McLaughlin was made chair of the school committee, and this is actually a conversation I had with her not that long ago, perhaps naively, I had some very high hopes and aspirations for really coming together and having perhaps the most productive and beneficial and positive year between those two boards in, in some time. And we started off pretty well early on, where we had, we set up, we agreed to set up several regular joint meetings between the town council and the school committee. Unfortunately, as that first one was about to happen, really the, the politics on the school side in particular were hijacked with a scandal with the superintendent. And, and unfortunately, that relationship's not yet recovered. Things have kind of gone downward pretty aggressively since then. I think ultimately, what we have is, what we need to do is understand where both sides are coming from, be respectful of that. There are issues or sides I disagree with of, of some of those on the council or on the school committee. There are people I agree with on both panels, obviously, but at no point should it become personal. At no point, if I disagree with a school committee member's policy or belief, is it because it's their policy or belief? And I think that's something that gets lost in the shuffle sometimes. I would like to think, I would like to hope that however this school committee shapes out, we have an appointment that'll have to come about through a joint process, we have two new people that'll be coming on board. What we need to do is turn that page and, and try to work together progressively and positively to really come together as one community, one town, one government.
Thank you. Mr. Sotilly.
The school committee and the town council have to communicate with each other and work cooperatively. First of all, act like adults and condition yourselves to finish a job that you were given, or the mandate you were given by the voters. I believe that a greater communications link should be acquired by the town council chairman to bring forth understanding between the parties, so they can act like adults when they go through the process of funding the school committee. However, once that process is completed, to let them, as elected officials, to, to continue their work and not interfere.
Thank you. Ms. Clemens.
Thank you. It has been a very volatile year, I guess that would be the term, probably the worst I've seen in, in, the, the best and the worst. We, as the previous speakers said, we have had joint meetings, they went well, we seem to talk about expectations on both, not sides, but in both areas of our government. And, you know, ultimately, we have to look at the school. The school has to govern themselves, but we, as a council, are responsible to the taxpayers, and people continue to ask us where their money's going to. So in some ways, while we're equal as elected officials, it's really difficult to answer the questions and come up with the right solutions when it's out of our control in many times. We definitely need to work together. We need to understand their logic and where they're coming up with what their needs are. I feel it's, definitely should never be personal, and it certainly should always be professional. It is a business. We are running a $54 million business here. We need to be professional in all areas so that we can attract people to our community and realize that we can work together as a council and a school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zodos.
When I, when I first started working in this town hall 15 years ago, I noticed that the town and the school both occupied this building, and I'm, I'm only imagining that what the town was trying to do was to put them together, but I noticed, in all the years I worked here, that all they did was avoid each other day in and day out, you know? There was a time when the superintendent, when I grew up, was in the high school, so he saw what everybody did. Then they moved here, and they didn't know what was going on at the school, and then they avoided each other. So I don't think you should blindside yourself by waking up on budget day and just give the school an ultimatum. I think all the council has to attend the town, the school committee meetings, and the school committee has to attend council meetings, and they've gotta work together all year. It's still one town. We separate the money and the powers, but it's still one town. And if you're watching, you'll know what the school needs, and the school will know what to ask for and what not to ask for. So get together, as my, as the Beatles said.
Thank you. Ms. O'Clair.
Thank you. So I know that one of the big issues is transparency between the school committee and the town council, and really, the entire town. It shouldn't be the school committee versus the town council. These are all of our children. You know, the town council only does the budget and only says yes or no to the budget, but that doesn't mean that they don't care. I do agree that we need to, or that everybody needs to act very professionally when we're dealing with these things. Obviously, the discussions can get a little bit heated, it seems, but at the end of the day, we're doing this for the town, and part of the town is the children and the schools. So I really feel like working together for the betterment of the community needs to be the focus rather than working independently of each other and secretively to each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'd go with a Beatles song with this one as much as an Aretha Franklin song. This is respect, mutual respect between the two. All right? We all are trying to do the best for Southbridge. Town council, the town council has one responsibility, and the, the school committee has another. The school committee needs to be united and working with a strong superintendent. The town council needs to support them. All right? We're all in the same boat together, let's all row together. Thank you.
Well, all right, we'll move to the next question. Mr. Sotilly, you'll, you'll be answering for two minutes and the others for a minute. The question is, the town has invested much in our landfill contract, in the construction of Commercial Drive, and in the initial steps toward the development of an industrial park. Casella is now requesting an expansion of the landfill into 11 additional acres. How would you want the town to proceed? How would you want the town to proceed?"
First of all, deny the application and require, the Board of Health require, a site assignment hearing to discover that the, and I'll give you some background for what happened last night. The, Casella wants to put up a leachate treatment plant, pre-treatment plant, and they've asked the town to provide a sewer line to the art treatment plant in East Southbridge. The presentation by the town manager last, yesterday, was camouflaged as a Hobson's Choice, as the manager, in league with the Airport Commission, palpably designed to persuade the town council to move towards a rushed legislative action that will allow the landfill operator to capture the use of a triangle of land, as you spoke of, within the airport property under the cover of installing the sewer line to bring the pretreated leachate from the landfill to East Southbridge. The pitch by the Airport Commission and the town manager included a straw man argument that the sewer line connection would benefit the building of an airport terminal and restaurant complex to be used by an elite minority. The proponents of that idea did not broach a more cost-effective way for the town, for example, by installing a cesspool system to handle waste from the airport complex, rather than burden the taxpayers with an additional $2.5 million landfill boondoggle. I implore the future town council that they study this further and come to a conclusion to deny that type of activity."
Thank you. Ms. Clements.
Thank you. Boy, in one minute, it's going to be impossible to get through, but again, I implore people to get the factual information and then make up your minds. I'm still weighing on many, much information from last night. The leachate that we speak of, that Casella is offering to build a plant on, which comes from our landfill, is currently now trucked over the roads. If there was a leachate plant, it would then clean up the leachate prior to it being disposed of, and then could, as wastewater go through the system. We are not looking to make a new sewer line from the landfill to the wastewater treatment plant. We already have those in, under the road on Commercial Drive. What the plan is proposing is to provide a sewer line to the airport, which is no benefit to Casella, it's just benefit to us. The leachate, of course, would speak for itself in terms of the Casella benefit. So, 11 acres. There are certain areas that are within the footprint that I'm not, I do not have a problem with if it's within the original footprint, but it's all up for speculation and up for permitting and Board of Health approvals, and until that happens, I don't see it happening, coming to fruition.
Thank you. Mr. Zotos.
Absolutely not. I wouldn't let them do anything. Leachate is the most destructive poison in the world. We don't really know what's in it. It's a witch's brew. We don't want anything to do with leachate. It won't stay in the pipe. It'll leak through the pipe. It'll leak through the trucks. We don't want leachate because we don't want the landfill. We don't want it here, and we don't want it anywhere. It's over. We're not building any more landfills. We're the last one. We're the last at everything. Now, it came to light at the last Board of Health meeting that the site assignment that we think we have now is not proper. Only 23 acres were site assigned. So what's up there now is illegal, and they're going to have to go back and do another hearing and another site assignment if they choose to. But that's why they're trying to hit a home run now, but it's not going to work. The Board of Health is going to stop them, or we're going to stop them, but we're not going to play that game anymore. We played it long enough. It's over.
Ms. O'Clair.
So, earlier today, I was actually talking to a practicer of municipal law, and I was asking her pretty much about, with this leachate facility and this thing that we're going to be stuck with forever, that's going to be up there well after Casella's gone, why wouldn't the town of Southbridge, instead of coming up with this elaborate plan to take, build a leachate plan on our dime, or on our bonding, and then bill Casella later and have them finance it later, why not pick up the McKinstry property and start site assigning it and then selling parcels back to Casella for large amounts of money, which would be, it's part of what they're trying to do, except Southbridge instead is putting itself at a disadvantage? So instead of taking advantage of these things that we have, they're putting themselves at a disadvantage. And she ended up telling me that Southbridge could start doing that now with the current landfill that's there, because Southbridge actually owns all of the land, and we have our hands tied.
Thank you.
I apologize. Could you repeat the question?
Certainly. Happy to. "The town has invested much in our landfill contract, in the construction of Commercial Drive, in the initial steps towards the development of an industrial park. Casella is now requesting an expansion of the landfill into 11 additional acres. How would you want the town to proceed?"
As I said in my opening statements, I would like to see the landfill filled in two years and capped. I do not want to see any expansion. The industrial park, I would like to see, have more business go there, but I don't know how realistic that is. But as far as Casella having any more expansion, or the additional cell that they're talking about putting up there, I'm absolutely opposed to.
Thank you. Mr. Moriarty, we'll finish with you.
Thank you. Long ago, a deal with the devil was made in putting a landfill atop Pleasant Street and Barefoot Road, and since then, we've had to deal with that. And as a council, as a community, we have to try to do what we can to make the best of that situation. And there really are not a whole lot of best ofs in the trash business. Personally, I have no interest whatsoever in expanding the landfill, whether it's a sliver or an acre or 11 acres or 81 acres. I have no interest in that whatsoever. The lifespan of that landfill is coming to a close quite rapidly, and for me, couldn't happen soon enough.
Thank you. All right, well, we've come to the time for the last question. We'll begin with Ms. Clements for her response to this, and one minute for each other candidate. The question is, "At least three department heads will be approved by the town council in the coming future: a police chief, DPW director, and economic development director. What particular character traits or skills would you want to see brought forward in these leaders?"
Wow. I don't think that's one I thought of, in terms of a question tonight. You're right, we do have three positions to fill. I've worked with numerous other, I've worked in a few, with a few of the DPW directors. We've had a number that have passed over us, and we've changed our Board of Health director before. We've changed, haven't changed our police chief, so this is a new one there. You know, we need some strong people. We need people who are definitely experienced. This community cannot afford to take on a new learner. We need to have some people who have the qualities with the education and the experience that they can bring forth to this community and provide us with what we're, with what we need. You've got three departments there that you're mentioning. Each one needs a little bit of something different. I would expect them to be team leaders, team players, working with, being able to manage their employees to the standards that this community deserves, and yet also being able to cooperate and collaborate with other department heads within the community. I think it's very important that they realize, you know, what they're getting into as they come and work for us. We're a great place to work for. I think we have a lot of great benefits and a lot of great opportunities for the right people. It's going to take due diligence and a lot of scrutiny to get it right. We've, in the past, with our DPW directors, you know, the candidate pool is difficult. It's very hard to get what we need. I think one of the things we don't need here is the, in our DPW side, and they're looking at that with the Charter Review Committee now, is that we are one of the only communities locally, Spencer does it also, but we require our DPW director to be a public engineer and a, have their road skills and such. I don't believe we need that. I believe we can save money for this community by having just a DPW director who is well-skilled in their field and using our services for engineering when we need them at a cost of when we need them.
Thank you. Mr. Zotos.
Yes, I've also worked with all these positions over the 10 years I've worked with the police, several police chiefs in the course of my lifetime. I, DPW director, there's a lot of work to be done, and the DPW director has to prioritize what's important and what's best for the most people, again, not just, you know, fixing one of the councilor's streets like we've seen before, or taking care of a particular neighborhood. We're all councilors at large, and these people have to understand, have to look at the town and make a priority list, you know? What neighborhoods are dangerous for the police chief? What neighborhoods need the most work? What neighborhoods have been neglected the most? You can't walk from Southbridge to Big Y. You can't do, it's almost impossible, and half this town has to do it every day. So people have to make lists and prioritize, and we have to vet them properly and see who can do that for us out of those three, and see who can do the most good for the most people. It's always the best way.
Very good. Ms. O'Clair.
So, going kind of play-by-play, so our new police chief. I would really like to see, obviously, a proven track record. I'd like to see a little bit of focus on, like, our existing Cops and Kids program and early intervention for some of our youth. Crime's been a real big problem in the past few years, and I think that a fresh face and a fresh perspective is, should be that fresh pace and fresh perspective that will kind of turn that around. Our economic developer, I've already talked a little bit on that. I think that somebody with experience, somebody who has a willingness to collaborate with the people and the ideas that are already here that just need that extra little bit to flourish, and for the DPW had the ability to prioritize, as Mr. Zotos kind of touched upon, and also an attention to detail. But something that I have for all three of those is vision, and I would like to see for these really important positions that are coming up and turning over this year, that they have vision for Southbridge and vision for what Southbridge has potential for. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. Mr. James.
Yeah, I believe there's actually four department heads that we need to be concerned with. The DPW, we need to have an engineer in there. That's what the charter calls for, and, I mean, I'm not disrespecting who has been doing the job. I think our snow removal has been tremendously improved this year, and I know that was a lot of help with our acting town manager. A police chief, I'm not entirely sure that it needs to be somebody from outside, the police department that we have in there. I would like to see who applies and weigh them all against each other and see what the best choice is. Economic development, wow, we have some real opportunities here. I think if we could start luring some businesses in to Southbridge, we'd be in great shape. And I think that the building inspector should be a full-time job. That is, that is a critical part of what we need to be doing here, and I don't know that part-time is going to cut it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moriarty.
Thank you. I think that there are two traits that are paramount, and everything kind of falls underneath that, and that's integrity and character. I think every other positive trait you can look for falls underneath those. I think that within the DPW, we need a DPW director who's going to be accountable, efficient, that'll think outside of the box when they have to problem-solve, and be mindful of the taxpayers' monies. Within the police department, I think programs like the Cops and Kids are great, and I think we should see more community policing, more feet on the street, and personally, I prefer to see somebody who's apolitical. And then lastly, with economic development, I think somebody who's going to be a visionary, somebody who's going to be aggressive and pursue these positions. And beyond that, I think, as a council anyways, what we need are people who are going to respect those individuals rather than try to be remote micromanagers.
Thank you. Mr. Sotile.
Yes. My view is that, as I said before, the council has to take up the economic development question themselves, not send it down into the town departments where it is languished for too many years with no action but much talk. I believe that we will be successful if the entire council comes together and moves towards that goal. As far as the DPW director, I agree with Councilor Clements that we need to adjust the title, because the person that's doing the job right now, in my opinion, is doing a fine job. As far as the police, more community service, training for their officers, and as the town council chairman said, in a more aggressive fashion.
Thank you very much. All right, well, we've moved to the part of the debate where each candidate will give a closing statement. The time limit on that is three minutes, and we will begin with Mr. Zotos.
Well, let's see. We've, you know, I like everybody up here. I know everybody up here. They've all tried their best. They all believe in the town. I see them at a lot of meetings. They've come in my office, and I can, I know they're all concerned about the town, and I appreciate that. And just like, you know, looking out at the audience, these are the people that really pay attention to what goes on, and so they know what we're saying is right. They know what we're all saying is right, you know? But somehow, you know, when two weeks go by and your life gets busy, you don't really feel like paying attention to the town council. So you might let something go by, and that's when they're, that's when things happen, and then there's nothing we can do about them. So we've got to publicize these meetings better. We've got to get people watching our cable channel again, and we've got to get everybody on board with what's happening in Southbridge, you know? There's just too many things, you know? When I go door-to-door, when I talk to citizens on the street, they throw their hands up. They think it's too big of a job for anyone to fix, like, everything is broken. And, you know, I don't think so. And if you think like that, you will become overwhelmed. But if we take things one at a time and one step at a time, and we discuss it, and we discuss it in the open, you know, like, I think there's some meetings going on tonight that we're all missing because they schedule them the same. There was a meeting Friday night when the town hall was closed. There was a meeting at 6 o'clock Friday night. The town hall was closed. I don't think anybody knew about it. We were all up at Relay for Life. So we really need to let the town know, full disclosure, when we're having meetings, what's at stake, and when we vote, let's vet both sides. Even if the council understands what they're voting on, let's discuss both sides and what the result is going to be to both sides of every issue, so when we vote, everybody knows why and what we're voting on and what we're going to do. The other night, there was a couple of councils that, I'm not sure they knew what they were voting on. They had to be reviewed several times. So even if you know the subject, let's go over what happens with a yes vote, what happens with a no vote, and how's that going to impact us, you know? There's so much to talk about that we can't really do it in two minutes, but, you know, we're all trying up here, and just like, and that's how we're going to try all year. But we have to work together. We've got to stop fighting. We've got this incredible birthday coming, and I really want to make this a great birthday. I'm not sure we're as great a town as we were in 1966, but there is a future here in Southbridge. And if you elect me and some of my colleagues up here, we can make everybody realize that there is a future in Southbridge, and we are part of that future, and our kids are part of that future. And if this was a great location years ago, it can become a great location again. It's that easy. But we've got to work together, and you've got to vote, and please vote for me on June 30th at the Amory, and maybe we should need a few more places to vote. You know, we've only got one. I'd like to see five again. Anyway, let's see you at the polls, everybody. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Ms. O'Clair.
Thank you. Our town is currently in a hostage situation. Don't worry. Interim town manager, Kevin Pecos, and everybody in town hall is just fine. Talking about a financial hostage situation. I spoke a little bit earlier on the leachate problem and Casella, and how we always seem to put ourselves at a disadvantage when it comes to Casella, and we need to stop taking that stance. We need to tell Casella is enough. The clock is ticking, and the time is nigh to find a replacement for Casella's annual royalty payments. I don't and never have thought that unsupervised operation was an option for this relationship. Now, closing in on 10 years of a 20-year estimate, Casella is dangerously close to closing the landfill unless we expand it further. Nobody seems to be 100% why, 100% sure why. But where does this expansion end? Downtown? We need to start formulating short, medium, and long-term solutions to this very real problem. We are faced with the reality that this money will run out. If not in two years, then at some time in the future. We need to bring revenue to offset climbing expenses, and we need to do it without hurting the taxpayers. In fact, we should be helping them. We need to bring businesses back to Main Street and revitalize the downtown. Empty storefronts are not indicative of a healthy economy to potential home or commercial use buyers. It isn't attractive to you, myself, or the property owners downtown. If nothing else, this is marketing. We need to draw, we need a draw for potential home buyers to call Southbridge home. We need to change the small business climate and welcome new business. There should never be another single taxpayer penny spent on legal fees fighting against positive business ventures for this community. For commercial buyers, we need to look at what experts say that larger industry look at when trying to relocate, not just allocate a spot and put parcels of land for sale. We need to look at providing labor force, transportation... We need to look at providing labor force, transportation, and utilities. Those are the top three things that manufacturers and office ventures are looking for in communities that they're looking to relocate in. These are the things that we need to focus on. Currently, we boast the top unemployment rate in Worcester County. That needs to translate into a skilled and trained workforce. We need to expand on the training already being offered in the area for manufacturing. We need to increase the amount of people attending college for administrative or office work. None of this is easy, but these are controllable things to market ourselves to potential incoming industry with existing tools already within the community. It won't happen overnight, but it can happen soon if the correct people are put in place to begin finding solutions. It's time to end the positive blinders and face our problems head-on. No multi-million dollar conglomerate ever became successful by saying everything was good. It's time to face our problems. Now we just need the people that will do the job. On voting day, please remember to vote for Kristin O'Clare. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. James.
Well, I'd like to start by, once again, thanking the committees for allowing us this opportunity, and for the moderator, for Cable Access, and for everybody that is watching here. I've really enjoyed this opportunity. I think I have a proven track record of working with people, being level-headed, and I think that Southbridge has tons of opportunities here. What we really need to do is draw business in here, and an economic development department is a key to that. We also need to improve the image of Southbridge, and blight is one of my biggest issues. I want to get these old dilapidated buildings out of here. We see them as we drive in. If you just get an image of Southbridge by driving in through 169, this does not look like a great place. But for those of us who live here, we know what's here. It's not just that. Again, thank you very much for your opportunity, and don't forget to vote on August, July 30th. Thank you.
Let's get that straight now. Is it June 30?
June 30.
June 30, all right. Very good. Otherwise, I'm here much too early. All right. Mr. Moriarty.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank, again, everybody who made tonight possible in order to try and let the voters get to meet everybody here. I think one of the things that's important is that, over the years, the town has done what it sees fit to try and move forward, and it doesn't always work that way that we hope, and some years are more productive than others, and I think that, personally, I think that this past year is one of the most productive years we've had. Without increasing the tax levy or touching the tax levy this year, we have the Charlton IMA, the water deal that came to fruition. We were able to increase the town employees' contributory shares on insurance by 10% while saving the town money in the process. We had a large-scale reorganization of the police department that ultimately is still really kind of going on with the hiring of a new police chief. We've started working on, as Mr. James pointed out, some of the derelict buildings in town and starting to knock down some of them, not as aggressively as I'd personally like, but we're making progress and continue to make progress. We have the new solar farm that should be saving us money and creating some savings for us. We were able to, again, without having to touch the tax levy, provide the Quinn bill for our police department to try and retain some very good officers from leaving. We finally settled on that pesky chicken bylaw that seemed to drag on forever. In addition to that, we've, I think anyways, compared to past councils, we've improved the tone and the tenor, generally speaking. I think that there are outliers, whether it's the town council, the school side, that really most of the negativity and the outbursts and so forth spew from, but I think as a whole, the council has acted in a much more professional and more inclusive way. There's been a great emphasis on transparency in this past year. And lastly, just in terms of rebuilding, or working towards rebuilding some sort of positive relationship with the school side, I think what we need is for the council members to do a better job of attending school committee meetings and vice versa. I know that during my three years, I've attended on a fairly regular basis school committee meetings, have attended, watched the ones that I've not been able to attend, and in particular this year as chair, I've attended the great majority. And I want to say the same for those who have done so, particularly Councilors Carrasco and Manna, as well as Councilors Peliquin and Steves, who have attended a good number of these meetings, and to make sure that we're there and take part and listen. We just recently wrapped up the search for a permanent town manager, a process that took far longer than it should have based on issues that came up in terms of referendums and candidate pools. We need to make sure we get the right person, and I think we've done that, and now we need to make sure that we get the right mix on town council and school committee, and I hope the voters will do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sotilly.
I'd like to thank the committee for your invitation. My closing statement will be titled Lessons Learned. When I moved from New York to Southbridge approximately 34 years ago, I found a viable small town that had been recently awarded the title of an all-American city. It had a vibrant economy which was starting to be plagued by a double-digit inflationary national banking interest rate. On the other hand, it still had a high community participation by all groups, religious, political, including the business community. It was a confident community that apparently worked as a team. What unfortunately started in the 80s was a classic scenario illustrating a one-company, dependent community that was starting to lose their prime manufacturing legacy employee, player. As that alpha entity was fading from the town, the unemployment rate steadily increases as a consequence of decades-long negative economic forces. By the time the decade was finished, community groups fractured and turned in on themselves to produce separate familial and competing self-interest camps, not unlike what has happened to many body politic formations in the past. Each camp competed for power continually for many years, using the town council platform to complete half-hearted fixes disguised in grant-money addicted practices. Shepherded by well-meaning amateurs who may inadvertently played into a somewhat fragmented oligarchical manufacturing business community reticent to invite further competition in Southbridge. The controlling imperative for any future town council is for it to close ranks and pivot to a new dynamic and cooperatively pull together a professional economic development team that can bring a large manufacturing new-age company into this community, thereby creating greater employment opportunities. This, I believe, with our improving school system, will resonate together to create needed infrastructure improvements that will, in its turn, improve employment and property values. Realistically, this will require the disparate mindset of councils who, I believe, have the well-being of this community as their focus to adopt as its prime effort a more hands-on control of future economic direction for this town. Mutual trust issues, which I believe were created by outside economic forces and exacerbated by local folks who were conditioned by anecdotal assumptions and disinformation, created false motivations to the political rank and file. The islands of distrust between the differing interest groups have created a sort of balkanization of the Southbridge team, which needs to be changed with the foregoing message in mind. I believe I can help lead this community toward a more realistic and adult governance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will close with Ms. Clements.
Thank you. It's time to offer the last thoughts that you may have from us before the election. Time for you to form your opinions and decide what to do, to see, and to see who is going to govern your community, who can add value to the position, and who will work for the betterment of Southbridge. Many people settle for Southbridge because of affordable housing or some of the great services that we have. I've chosen to settle in Southbridge, not settle, but chose Southbridge. I believe this town is good, but it can be greater. Some say everyone is leaving, no one wants to live or have a business in Southbridge, and I say not true. In the last six years I've served, I've taken notice of many goings but more comings. We have had our challenges: snowstorms, tornadoes, vacant positions, budget woes, and economic downturns, but there are upturns as well. You really don't have to look far. We have great success stories, long-running, multi-generation businesses that have not left but continue to support this community: Big Money Market, Flood's Automotive, Knight's Auto, Tassie's Fuel, Morin Jewelers, United Lens, and many, many more. They have had to make changes, but they're still here, serving you, this community. We have our amazing hospital that has absolutely incredible expansion in all areas over the last few years. QCC was just starting out six years ago and now is looking at a 20,000-square-foot expansion through its technology center, and there's more to come. I'm hoping they will do a presentation for us soon. We now have bus service, who would have thought? Our airport was not done in by the tornado, but instead houses an acclaimed flight school and will soon have a new, expanded, state-of-the-art terminal. This is an idling economic engine that will, with a little more fuel, will be ready to take off with no limits. We are on the map, as was said by Kim Cameron at the conference center. Businesses on the verge of leaving town instead have been shown opportunities, stayed and expanded, keeping tax dollars right here, namely Optimum Technologies, who now occupy the former Pleasant Street School Building right here in Southbridge. They're developing high-tech diagnostic medical tools for the benefit of the world. It's really amazing. And Expert Laser Services, who transformed our old, worn-out DPW building into a beautiful workplace, enhancing not only the business but the entire neighborhood. These are true success stories we should be proud of. It takes every one of us to make a difference, to keep our town on the map. I believe that as an elected official working for the people, one must possess compassion, the ability to compromise, and, most importantly, commitment. We don't need seat warmers and figureheads, we need elected members that will put in the time and do the work necessary with only one agenda: to move this community forward. I've worked with many devoted community members over the years, all with the common goal of making Southbridge a better place to live, and I'd like to continue to work, to do that work that's necessary, not just to meet that goal but to exceed it. I want to thank you for supporting me over the last six years. I appreciate all those of you who've had faith in me, it's been an honor to serve your community. I thank you for your time this evening. This is your town, this is your decision, and I would appreciate your vote, a vote for Clements on Tuesday, June 30th. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much to all the candidates, thank you for your invitation to serve as debate moderator. I think we'll conclude with a reminder that the vote is on June 30. That's correct, we now have that straight, and please come out and vote.
I'd just like to thank the candidates for coming out tonight. I know for the school committee members as well, it's very hard to go up there sometimes and answer those questions on a dime, so thank you very much. I also want to thank the local access, the cable committee, they always do a wonderful job. Mr. Cheninsky and Mr. Cristo, thank you very much. Mr. Jovan, Mr. Loftus, thank you for coming out and moderating this debate. And I'll let Jack take over. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Monique. It's certainly, this has been the third, I think, debate that I've participated with my colleagues on the Republican side. It's great to have the Republicans and Democrats come together at least one night during the year, but for the benefit of the town of Southbridge. I mean, we all care, you're putting yourselves forward as candidates, the school committee candidates that came up, and there's no doubt that, as a community, we have a lot of issues that need to be addressed in the upcoming year. The sad thing is that we have such a little bit of time to answer the questions that we put forward tonight. There was probably another eight questions that we had on the town council side that we could have asked, a lot of issues out there. So what I would ask is that the voters out there, please contact these candidates, vet them out on the school side and the town side, find out what their positions are, how are they going to better the town of Southbridge? Because in this small clip of an hour and a half, it's very, very difficult to find out what the true positions are. So it's incumbent on you, the candidates, to get out, I mean, the public, to ask these questions. Unfortunately, we don't have a newspaper any longer that really delves into candidates' profiles and stories. So with that being said, this debate, this forum will be edited by the Cable Access, and Monique did thank them, but personally, I'd like to thank them individually: Mike Montigny, Jacob Maldonado, I always miss his name, Tom Ayo, Jim Cosgrove, and Ray Gauthier. These guys deserve a hand. Because they're behind the cameras, and they have meetings every single night, and they volunteer their time. So thank you very much for coming here on this hot night. My colleague, Bob Cheninsky, thank you for putting this together because you really did do a lot of work. I wasn't much assistance due to technology, but thank you very much for the questions that you put forward. Kevin Cristo, thanks for being a timer. And Mr. Loftus, thank you for being the moderator here tonight, you did a great job. You kept it going and you kept everybody timely. So, so thank you. So again, June 30th is the election, the last day of the month, the very last day of the term, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. You'll have the opportunity to elect two new members to the Southbridge School Committee as the incumbents have not taken out papers, so they'll have two new members, so seek them out. And on the town council side, you have two incumbents that are running. I'd like to thank you for your service and wish you luck. And we have one vacancy where someone didn't take out papers for reelection. So after this is edited, it'll be shown on the Cable Access channel, and also, Mr. Montigny has said that it'll be shown on YouTube. So for all you people out there in the universe that have internet and like to get it on YouTube, and I think that's great because it does give you a new thing. So thank you very much, lot of issues, and thank you for being here tonight, and we wish you the best of luck. On behalf of the Southbridge Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Committee, thank you for being here tonight, and we wish you all the best of luck.